Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to welcome you and the Planning Commission members to the August 2021 Lancaster Planning Commission meeting. Did everyone receive their information package prior to the meeting?
Yes.
Have a chance to review them, and are there any suggested changes?
No.
That said, I'd like to make a motion to accept the meeting, uh, past meeting minutes as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we've got no public presentation. Mr. Barnes, for item three, and then moving to item four, we have two public hearing items.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first public hearing you have is a request for change of zoning district classification from M1 to R1 by H30 Investments LLC. As you remember, this request was scheduled to be heard last month, but no one was present to represent it, so you all wisely decided to table it to give someone the opportunity to appear. They're here tonight. I provided with you, uh, there's really no new information. I did have a little new information item in that we went ahead and re-notified all the adjacent property owners just to make sure that they were aware and properly served. That was done. I still did not hear any feedback on that.
Nothing? One way or the other?
Not, not for or against.
Okay. Thank you. You guys have anything for Barnes before I open up the public hearing? And we do have a representative here, I was told, tonight, um, Mr. Breeden. So, nothing else to add, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing for, for item number one. Consideration for, uh, is it H3O Investments LLC to rezone, um, from M1 to R1. Tax map 33164, Carter's Cove Drive. And if anyone would like to come up, I'd like to, to please state their name from the record and the district that they're representing.
Jim Bryn from Irvington, and I represent, uh, Hyder Harris, his name, his company. He's, uh, spent a lot of his life in Irvington. He owns his property on Carter's Creek. I would point out that it is, uh, it's zoned industrial, but I, according to the appraisal work we've had done on it, the highest and best use of property like this...
Excuse me, Mr. Breeden, can you move the microphone so it's closer? It's, it's hard for me to hear.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm Jim Bryn from Irvington.
Thank you.
I represent H3O Investments, uh, which is a company that, uh, is, uh, Mr. Hyder Harris' company. He's a, uh, lives in Richmond and Irvington, and he's asking if he could have, uh, res, uh, he, if he could have the change in this zoning category from, uh, the present M1 to R1. The evidence should be on this is that it's been very difficult to market this property, uh, as an industrial piece of property, and here's why. If anybody wants to put an industrial use on this property, and there was a contract recently which didn't go through, but the price was $530,000. If you spend $530,000 on that land, uh, the chances of developing it into an industrial property are not good because you could move not too far off of the property and buy a property that at considerably less price to put an industrial use on. Now, there are some uses in, uh, in M1 that are, have historically been, uh, related to the water, shellfish and so forth, but, uh, if you look at what's happened in that area, the, about a year, within the last year, one of the old line seafood pri, uh, companies, uh, W.F. Morgan, been there forever and ever, a generational thing, uh, they were not able to sell any fashion for, uh, for seafood processing. The market just doesn't bear it now. Uh, I, I looked into this a little bit, and it's kind of interesting. Historically, in the northern neck, a lot of commerce was conducted via water. Uh, you take Lilian Lumber Company over in, uh, Northumberland County. Their main operation for years was on the Waucamiko River because all the lumber came in that way. Number of years ago, probably 20 years ago, they moved up to Burgess on the highway, uh, and they have a lumbering operation down there, but no lumber is shipped into, uh, to Lilian Lumber Company via the water anymore. It's, uh, something that just doesn't happen histor, currently. It did historically, but not now. The, uh, the appraisal information we've gotten on this property is that its highest and best use would be for residential property. And, uh, so that's what we're, um, on behalf of, uh, Mr. Harris are asking, uh, the Planning Commission to do, to approve it, uh, for that, uh, purpose. And of course, uh, in terms of protecting the environment and, and the neighborhood, this property is clearly subject to the, uh, requirements of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act, which means that it will be, uh, protected, uh, for use, uh, via the water and otherwise. It's, uh, not asking for unrestricted development in any sense. The, I think you all know better the most that, uh, the Preservation Act has been, uh, a very effective way of protecting our waterways, and that would apply here. Um, the, I don't believe there are any issues with public access, uh, to this property. There's a state road that goes next to it, as you can see from the plat, uh, and, uh, the, uh, the, um, the, the, it's served by that road, and then there's an interesting feature of this property, which I don't know that has any bearing on what you're being asked to do, but years ago, uh, a family that lived on Carter's Creek brought a lawsuit claiming that through King's Grants, continuous, uh, grants and then deeds back when the King owned it, England owned this property, and that therefore, they claiming through, uh, Great Britain, said that, uh, they owned the bottom, uh, only a couple places in all of Virginia, and I will be candid to confess with you that I and a lot of other lawyers laughed at them, said, "No way. Uh, that belongs by statute to the Commonwealth of Virginia below me and low water." Well, it went to Supreme Court, Supreme Courts, and, oh, by the way, Judge Foster here in this court, in this actual courtroom, said, "Yes, it belongs to you. It doesn't belong to the state." And we laughed. We said, "There's no way that's going to stand up." Went to the Virginia Supreme Court, and they upheld the landowners. So, as you go around Carter's Creek, in a very limited sense, you'll see land, submerged land that belongs to the high ground owners, and I just point that out, that, that if you look, uh, on the northerly edge of this property, Mr. Pruitt, the surveyor, has noted King's Grant, uh, re-submerged land. Uh, there are only two or three places in all of the state of Virginia that way, so I would respectfully ask you, um, to approve the petition of, uh, Mr. Harris or his company. Thank you. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
I have one that we, we were just sort of contemplating, um, when Mr., was it Hera or Harris? I couldn't quite hear. Is it Hera that owns it, the, the, that you're representing? Is it Hera or Harris, Mr. Breeden?
No, I represent Hyder.
Hyder, thank you.
Hyder, H-I-T-E-R.
What our question was is what, what was his original intention when he purchased it? Do you know?
I could give you what I believe to be his, uh, original, uh, purpose when he, uh, bought it. Uh, it's changed back and forth. Uh, one of the things, and then I'll come to what he, I think he's thinking about now. He's owned this property for a while, and, uh, they were, uh, the owner, he and some of his co-investors were concerned about, continuing to allow, that if they tried to come to, uh, to the county and get approval for additional marina slips, they'd run into a lot of, a lot of opposition because, uh, Mr. Abbott has a marina adjacent to this, been there for a long time, uh, and others. Uh, and so I think it's fair to say that they originally thought, "This is investment property, and it's, uh, we ought to be able to sell it for an investment, uh, somebody to put something in there that fits into the M1 category," which you all are very familiar with, uh, and as time has gone on, uh, they have realized with the advice of, uh, people who know Lancaster County land, Emily Carter, Jimmy's sister, has been involved with them, that there's just no market. And so, th, they no longer feel that they're going to be able to make their riches, so to speak, off of, uh, commercial property, uh, in Carter's Creek, and if you, if you look up and down Carter's Creek, and it's certainly, uh, I live on Carter's Creek, uh, many of you do, it's a resource of this county, and, and we value it. We're jealous about it. But to say that it has been a hotbed of commercial or industrial activity over the last 25 years is, is just simply not true. There are some still well-run, uh, companies on Carter's Creek. I'm complimenting my friend, Mr. Callum, who's here. They have, you know, they, they have, uh, they're a shining example, but there aren't many others because, uh, again, the highest and best use, which you'll understand, uh, Mr. Brent, is that that's not what it is anymore. So, I hope that answers your question, and I think it's safe to say that it started with, uh, a hope that they, this is an indu, industrial property, and we'll be able to sell it as industrial property, and as time has wound on, there's just no market. Uh, people, uh, they say, "If I gotta pay that kind of money, I'm, I'm not going to find some company who's willing to pay the kind of money that, uh, this land would, uh, would bear in the market and then put an industrial use on it," because they can put that same industrial use somewhere else in this county, uh, and, uh, do it a lot cheaper. So, that's my answer. Thank you.
I do have a question. So, you mentioned that if you were to move that to, for that property to another M1, um, that there would be a significantly reduced price. My question, just out of curiosity, is would that M1 property also be waterfront?
I'm not sure that's what I meant to say.
No, I was just curious.
What I'm, what I'm saying is that this property, uh, if it, uh, were zoned residential, uh, which is what we're asking you to do, it would, we believe bring the type prices that, uh, that other properties in that neighborhood, uh, essentially farther up the creek, up toward the Tides End, have been bringing, and they're top dollar type prices. Uh, it's, in, in many respects, um, and I've had people tell me this, you know, we feel like that we've been sold short, people in Weems, North Weems in particular, because all the high dollar property and that expensive property is up near the Tides End, and we can't do anything down here because we're zoned industrial, and nobody wants to put a seafood processing plant, uh, down near the end. Very few. Uh, marina is certainly something there, but, uh, and so that, that's been kind of an underlying feeling. I'm not here advocating that position, but when I talked to people investigating how they felt, they said, "Well, one person said, 'It's about time the county start helping us realize the value of our property,'" which is a lot more than we're getting, because if you look through the records in Lancaster County, the land records, uh, where's the clerk's office now? Over there, uh, that, uh, there haven't been many commercial or industrial sales in this area. It just doesn't happen. Doesn't happen. Just historically, I want you to know, that used to be the clerk's office over there. I remember. Mine isn't going there. When I started practicing law, it was 154 volumes there. Now it's about 500, so that tells you what's happened. Thank you. Any other questions? I'll be happy to answer, or try to answer.
Mr. Breeden, you stated that, um, Carter's Creek's an asset to the county, and I agree with you. Um, it's one of the reasons I moved here. Uh, I don't live on Carter's Creek, but what, so what happens when all of the waterfront properties owned by individuals and not by, um, uh, you know, where individuals themselves in the county that aren't waterfront, can't even access the waterfront anymore?
Excellent question, and, uh, the first thing is, there's a huge tract of land up at the head of this cove owned by the Tides End, which is not individual. Uh, and secondly, uh, my thinking on that is that with a lot of foresight, the county can provide for public access. I've heard Mr. Lee speak eloquently on, uh, the need for us to provide public access to, to our citizens. We haven't done enough of it, and before it's all sold to individuals, and I can take people out in a boat and say, "Here's a place you could use. Here's a place you can use," much of it not expensive land, which could be used for public access, but there's been almost no, uh, consideration of, um, of, um, providing that access. And, uh, this, this piece of property will not, uh, address that issue. That's not what I'm here to ask for, but it is something that I, as a citizen, Mr. Richardson, uh, believe that the county needs to pay a lot of attention to, because, Mr. Lee can tell you, you ask anybody around this county who doesn't live on the water, they have trouble finding a place to get on the water, and, uh, that's unfortunate because the whole, our, our major asset is Chesapeake Bay and the Rappahannock River and its tributaries, and if we don't do something about it soon, it will be used up, I, I believe. Maybe not my lifetime, but, uh, which isn't much longer, but still, it might be used up.
And then I have a concern about the encroachment of, really, the only producer of jobs in Weems is Calton Seafood, and if all this property around Calton Seafood and Ampro gets rezoned to residential, all of a sudden, they're going to feel pressure from the neighbors to s, to be quiet, to quit running trucks up and down the street, to, "Why are your workboats going out so early in the morning? It's disturbing my peace and quiet." Can you address the issue, and, and maybe we'll hear from Tommy if, if he's concerned about that?
Sure.
Resoning property close to, uh, ongoing job creating M1 property is of concern.
You look around this county, Mr. Richardson, and there are numerous instances of industrial, if you want to call them, seafood processing plants that have survived and lived next to seafood processing operations for years and years. There's often, there's often some friction at first when, uh, the people that lived in Arlington or Alexandria come down, and, uh, around November, when the oyster shucking comes along, they start about 2:00 in the morning, and they go, "My lord, we didn't know that. The realtor didn't tell us that." No, they didn't, but I think you can sit, you can determine that that, that those adjustments between, uh, retired people, which would be using property like this, I think, by and large, and, uh, uh, the seafood users, that there's been no friction. There have been no suits, uh, in the circuit court. I can tell you with certainty, uh, in the 50 years I've been practicing law, where, uh, with the exception of maybe one, which was unsuccessful, where, uh, a private landowner complained that the seafood operation, uh, which is primarily what we're talking about, uh, is a, a public nuisance or a private nuisance, whichever, they have lived together. In this county, that's been the way it, uh, the people have existed, uh, and, uh, certainly, you can drive down to Weems, Mr. Richardson, and go over to North Weems and look. There are lots of residential, uh, uh, properties there, all up and down the road. People live there. They buy, many of them work on the water, uh, and, uh, they, I guess in many instances, live there because it's close to the water, but the, it, it's certainly, uh, not fair to say that they have reservations about, uh, commercial property next to them and, or residential. And so, um, the, the, the owner of this property is simply saying that he's been unable to, uh, to market this property as, as, um, uh, commercial, industrial property, excuse me. There's no, there's no market there, uh, and I defy you all to show me a sale in that area, uh, except for the one last spring, and it took 10, 12 years. I was closely involved in it, and it's still not going to be a commercial property. W.F. Morgan Seafood, you know, the, the...
I mean...
W.F. Morgan Seafood, uh, was there, and it was, and if you went over there and looked at it, and I did far too many times, it was falling apart. That, that nobody wanted to buy it and build on it and so forth, and the poor Morgan family, which had, had developed this property through the years as a prosperous seafood operation, it could no longer sustain it on a cove of Carter's Creek. Uh, there, there were economic considerations that, uh, that were there, and, uh, you know, if you want to have seafood trucked in and out of there, and that's the only way you're going to do it now, Mr. Richardson. You're not going to be able to process seafood, put it on a boat and haul it to Baltimore, maybe, Norfolk, whatever. It's going to have to be trucking, which is what we're looking at now, and so, uh, I, I, I think this is kind of an interesting discussion to me, aside from this case, in that I, I think it says a lot about things we need to deal with in Lancaster County in, in terms of building a, a good commercial base, but if you, if bankers and real estate people and lawyers think about what's been the economic base of this county, it has not been industrial development. It has been real estate development, nicely done. It has been recreational development, the Tides End, Mr. Patterson's operation, and, um, lots of other things like that, but the, but to, to argue that to change this zoning might eliminate a place for a, an industrial use, I, I do not believe the appraisal, uh, uh, evidence supports that, uh, and certainly the empirical evidence, meaning go over there and look, over there and look, uh, at what's been sold, and it's not sold for, for industrial development. So, we, you all have a piece of land there that is zoned industrial, and so what? Nobody can use it. Nobody can do anything on it because they can't afford to pay the kind of money and then put a what on it? It hasn't happened. If, if somebody could come in here in opposition to our client's, uh, project and say, "Wait a minute, he's all wet. They've sold this, 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 and this, and those are prosperous industrial uses," then I'm wrong, but I, I'm satisfied that that is not the case, and what I'm asking for is to make this property, uh, convert this property into a, um, highest and best use concept, and, um, that's where it is. Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Breeden, I, I, I would like to make a statement, um, concerning something you said. You know, years ago, people, neighbors, and things like that didn't complain about trucks and noise and things like that. The demographics had changed. Culture had changed, and people do complain now about trucks going up and down. We have a business on this end of the county up here that we're allowed to come into a, a place that the neighbors has constantly complained, even about lights being on too late at night. So, things have changed. You know, when I was growing up, yeah, you right. You know, we both starting up 2:00 in the morning, didn't make any difference, but today it does make a difference. So, because the culture has changed, demographics have changed, people, uh, I don't want to say everybody that's moved in or whatever, because it's not everybody, but the majority of the people don't expect that. They not moving here for that. So, things have changed, uh, according to what people, let's say, will tolerate now, and we, Mr. Barnes can tell you, we have fielded a lot of complaints about this one place we allowed to come in, and they're, the guys are trying to work, they're trying to do business, but the neighbors, they don't want lights on after a certain time. They don't want the noise. They don't want to hear the, the trucks driving in and out, so I just wanted to let you know, things have changed.
I understand that, and I know the place you're talking about, the UPS operation up to county, and, uh, it's a mixed bag. There are lots of people that think it's great for the commerce of this county, that, uh, you can get things in and out of here quicker than you used to, but certainly it is. The, the, the issues are more closely divided now than they used to be, but I don't think that does away with Mr. Lee, the obligation of we as a county, I'm not in county government, thank the good lord, uh, and, but that we need to provide our citizens access to our greatest resource.
No question.
And, and you speak more eloquently on that than I could ever do.
We got 300 and some miles of shoreline. The majority of people can't get to it. So, I, I'm well aware of what, what we need to do, but I just wanted to...
I appreciate that, and, and...
Things have changed.
Right. Any more questions? I'll be happy to answer.
Yes. Uh, Mr. Breeden?
Yes.
I believe, um, when this land was originally purchased by, uh...
H3O?
Yes. Um, what was its intent?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch...
When it was originally purchased by H3O, what was their original intent when they purchased it?
Well, they originally thought, since it was zoned in... Well, they originally thought, since it was zoned industrial, you know, which is a high use, that it was going to have value in order to turn it over, that you've got something that's, wait a minute, you know, there's an industrial piece of land here on Carter's Creek, that's got to be worth a lot of money. The facts have borne out, the, have proven that as an industrial piece of land, it really has less value. Everybody wants this piece of land, is, feels that its highest and best use is, is residential and not, not commercial or industrial. So they got their, they got an awakening when they bought this piece of property because they certainly thought, hey, this is great, we can buy this piece of property, and it's got, it's zoned industrial and not many places in the county you can put things that, that are truly industrial, so this will be wonderful. But that soon turned out not to be true, that no one wants to put an industrial use there anymore.
Mr. Breeden, it sounds like it was a bad investment.
Yes.
And I don't know if this board is in the position to, you know, make it a good investment for the guy. That's not our job. You lose money on some deals and you make money on some deals.
Well, I mean, you all can approach it that way. You certainly can, you're entitled to.
Well, that's what you keep bringing, you keep bringing that up as, it was an investment.
Sure, I understand that.
He's trying to get the most money that he can for his investment.
Taxes at 100% on the dollar have been paid on this property, you know, he's not been a bad citizen, hasn't done anything on the property that
Nobody's saying he has.
And our request is that you all allow him to make a reasonable return on his investment. And that is that the best way he can make a reasonable return on that investment is to sell it as residential property. Because through all these years, he has not sold it as industrial property, nor has anyone else.
I agree with you, yeah.
And, and
No, I don't disagree with you.
No. It's your choice, if you want to leave this industrial segment there that is truly unmarketable, it's your choice. Who's going to buy it at these prices where they can't put anything really in it? Look at the list, what could you put on it? Not much. You could put a marina, but to run a marina today, you've got to be an environmental engineer and sort of real resources, which is not easy to deal with. Or look down the list of things, there's not much you can do. You can do it, you can put a tanning factory there. What's the, what's the demand for a tanning factory today? And go on down the list, there's not, not much you can put there. And so you all are, and it is your legislative choice at this stage to say, no, we want to keep it the way it is so that it stays there. Certainly not, nobody's going to put any money in it to approve it if they can't get it out. And, you know, you all can take the position, it's been a bad investment, too bad, you should have thought about that before, and that's certainly a legitimate concern. All I'm saying is, in order to put this property into a productive sense, you ought to consider rezoning it to, to Art One, which is what we're asking for.
Let, let, let me ask you. You mentioned the county's dire need for public access sites, which you've seen over 50 or so years. Can you conceive that this might, the highest and best use of this property might possibly be as a public access site?
That's an interesting question, and, and I have thought about it, been down there and looked at it. If you look at the plaque, which is before you, there's a little pond off to the side that's part of
I went down there to look at it. I, I could not find the pond, but I assume it was
It's hard to
off to my right and kind of hidden.
It, it, yeah, I think it would be a good idea, I'll be honest with you. I'm speaking without authority of Mr. Harris now, but, but if he got a, a fair price for it, yeah, I, I think it's a good place to put a recreational area. When I first came down here, I'm going to speak very candidly with you, I was from the western part of the state, Augusta County, where there were parks, and Stanton has a huge park, big swimming pools, all kinds of recreational use throughout Augusta County. I came down here, there was almost nothing, and I couldn't figure that out. I figured it out though, eventually, and I'm going to speak very candidly to you all. The white people in this county did not want a facility that was available to black citizens. Pure and simple, you can argue that all you want, but it's true. It is true. And when the federal government started saying, hey, guys, if you're going to get a tax exemption for the swimming pools and so forth that you have, they're going to be open to everybody. And what did they do with the tidewater swimming pool down Dimer Creek? Who knows? They filled it in, filled it in, rather than, than open it to all of our citizens. So in answer to the question, yeah, I think that'd be a good place for it. And I don't think you'd have any real problem. You've got to regulate it, you know, you've got to have proper supervision of it, but, but yes, it would be, I think, in, in answer to your question. It's good size, but the only thing I could say is, maybe it's too big, it's almost five acres, but still. And, and the first real open public property was here, and the gentleman who was largely responsible for it, so in the audience, this is Jimmy Carter at Belle Isle. We hadn't had anything like that before. Here we got, here we got not hundreds, but thousands of acres of beautiful waterfront property, all privately owned. And you got Belle Isle was the first one. And now, you know, so that's my take on that. I know it's probably not popular, popular with my Republican friends, but I believe that's the case, and I'm proud to say it. Any other questions?
Let me just add that I've been on this commission for 12 years, and that's probably the most honest, candid statement I have ever heard.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. I believe it, I'll put it that way.
I can tell.
Thank you all, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Yes, sir.
No, after your turn, no. No? He's ready for me. No.
Not really. Charlie Costello. January 28th, the Board of Supervisors, one of their items, they talked about vacancies and severe attacks, water accidents. They've been talking about it, I've been doing this, what, 25 years or better? And I think this is a perfect area, and really, I'm glad to hear Mr. Breeden say that and what all we're talking about. I think this is a golden opportunity to do it, and it's good for the county, and I think you can strike some kind of a balance. Money? $5.30? It sounds like a lot of money. What is it? It's two cents on the tax for one year. We gave up the boat tax, that was $495,000. I mean, come on, guys, let's have water access. And Caddis Creek, we've got one out at Window Point here, and Belle Isle, you've got it right along the way. It fits perfectly. I think you ought to go for it in a big way. And you don't make the decision, you only make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, but they got to jump on this for the people of this county. It's time, we need to do it now. Thank you very much.
Chairman, I would, I think if you, if you made here, could maybe worthwhile, ask the planning permission to table this, and I assure you that Ricky Williams, Horns, and Mr. Peter Harris, we can, we can look at this, because we haven't, I haven't been looking at it from a viewpoint that that would be a great place, but now that I've heard, I think you would, but Mr. Harris, who you all know, is, his father was Peter Harris, a gentleman, he's a banker at Southern Bank in Richmond, and at House in Irvington. Without speaking for him, he may very well welcome this sort of contribution to Lancaster County. I think it would be a contribution to Lancaster County. And it, he may have some tax benefits by giving it to the county. Again, I'm not, I'm not suggesting he's going to do that, but, but, you know, those are the sort of things that fit in the confines of a meeting that we have here. This is, I think, I do not, I for one, do like to work with them.
Have you been reading past minutes, Mr. Breeden?
Pardon?
Have you been reading our, our, our past meeting minutes by chance? I'm just, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
I've been to a couple.
Sort of.
You know, I don't have, type of people I represent rarely have to go before a point. It's more the general district.
Does anyone else, before we close this public hearing, have anything else they'd like to say regarding this rezoning request?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Manos, County Administrative, folks, I'm Tom Kellam with Kellam Oyster Company. We own the property that's basically between the request changes that you have for you tonight, both upstream and downstream. So, so that you don't have to hear my lack of inequence twice, I'd like to, pleasure to chair him and speak to both
We were going to
rezoning requests.
Yes, please.
Thanks. Our three companies, W. Kellam Seafood, Ampro Shipyard, and Kellam Brothers are all located in the central property on about five parcels between the two properties that are asking for the rezoning request. I'd like to speak a little bit about what each one of those businesses does to give you a flavor for what we do. And unfortunately, I don't want to contradict anything that's been said prior, but we recently purchased about three years ago, the Ampro Shipyard property from American Proteins in Cummins, Georgia. We, we paid less than the assessed value, and we kept it in industrial use and continued it on as a shipyard. The property that our oyster company sits on, we purchased from our family about four years ago. A partial of that property, the, the other portion was purchased about 20 years ago, and we paid full appraised value per an appraisal from Mr. Holmes' firm, commercial appraisal that was done at, at the time. So we actually did pay full praise price for that waterfront parcel where we operate our oyster plant. To give you a flavor for what we do, at WR Kellam, we, we process about eight million pounds of oysters annually. That product gets shipped to about 32 states. It all goes out by truck, as Mr. Breeden spoke of. About 50% of that product actually comes in by waterside from either oysters that we purchase from independent oystermen that work on the Rappahannock River or out to the Chesapeake Bay, or it comes on company-owned and independent boats that work on our private lease oyster beds in the Rappahannock. We have about 1,000 acres that we propagate oysters on from the Rappahannock Bridge around to the upper part of the Curatoma River. So we do rely heavily on our waterfront access for our, our oyster operation. I'm, I'm very proud, we, we're in our fourth generation there. We actually have young family members, as well as a young African American that we've brought in. He worked for us, I'm really proud of this. He, he approached me when he was in ninth grade with his report card, straight A report card, and asked for an opportunity for a job. And we brought him in, he made seafood cartons for one year. He was actually afforded the opportunity to work as many hours as he wanted, and I'd have to ask him at night, don't you have homework? Don't you, you know, are your parents concerned where you're at? And today, he's plant manager in our shucking operation. He's going to be attending Virginia Tech Food Safety School this, this year, and aspires to be a, a part owner at some time. So we've got opportunities in our operation that, that you don't see everywhere. So that product that shipped in 32 states, I'm very proud that that comes here out of Lancaster County. We do that activity through whole major retailers and food service companies located in the southeast, midwest, mid-Atlantic, and northeast. So there's a lot of activity that happens in, in Little Weems that, that touches a lot of areas throughout the, throughout the country. Ampro Shipyard is a 138-year-old waterfront, commercial, industrial vessel repair facility. We operate today as a topside repair facility. Our biggest customer is Omega Protein in Reedville. We also do work for Ward Brothers Tug and Towing, which is the last privately owned tug and towing company in Virginia. And then we also do work for a host of other smaller commercial vessel owners throughout the Commonwealth. We have welders, pipe fitters, it's a seasonal activity that's driven by the Omega work. And we have welders in the $25 to $30 an hour range, just like anyone else, we're struggling to find personnel, but there are opportunities there. And in addition, we also offer waterside access for the ongoing Robert O'Norris saga. We continue to have contractors working out of our facility for maintenance of the bridge. And also, we've, most recently, for the last three years, been host to the contractors for the Dominion Energy Sebaku's transmission line project. We've had as much as 260-foot crane barges in there, had a, had a 1,000-ton crane there working out of the facility, crew boats, running crews out to the project, so a lot of industrial activity there. We create noise, we create traffic, and we create six-day-a-week activity. We work weekends, we, we try not, we're a faith-based business, we try not to work Sundays, but occasionally our donkey gets stuck in the mud and we, we work on Sabbath, albeit not a, not a habit, but there's a lot of activity there. Our third company, Kellam Brothers, is an oyster restoration and oyster harvesting company. In the last 90 days, we've moved 60 million pounds of granite stone out of the Ampro facility to build an oyster reef in the Piankey Tank River. That was 1,200 truckloads of granite that came down Weems Road and went out on a 200-foot barge that was pushed out with a tug to, to build this restoration sanctuary oyster reef. So a lot of activity on that front. In addition, we, we moved seven million pounds of oyster shell colts in the last 30 days by our 90-foot vessel, the Hopeful Harvest. All of that went out of the facility there in Weems, out to the Rappahannock, as far north as the Potomac River. We go as far south as the James River. We do restoration for both the Commonwealth of Virginia public oyster beds, as well as our private oyster beds, and also independent oyster growers throughout the, the middle portion of the bay. So the Kellam Brothers side has the most interaction with waterfront commerce. I'm not sure if you can envision a 60-million-pound pile of granite, but it's, it's pretty enormous. The conveyance equipment that we use to load those barges, we, it, it's noisy, and it's suited to an M1 industrial application. That's, that's the reason we're there, and that's, you know, that's the purpose of it. I'm not here to speak for or against the, the property rezoning request you have before you. What I would like to be on record, and what I would like to ask you to consider is that, as Mr. Lee indicated, folks do complain. We're a highly industrial operation, we're a young company in management, we're investing in future young people. We don't plan to get smaller, we don't plan to go anywhere, and God forbid, we'll be in place for generations to come. So my concern comes from the, the adjacent properties being zoned residential, that five years from now, I'm standing before you fighting for my life, that I've got one concerned about noise, traffic, odor, or the duration of hours that we operate. And I have met with the prospective And I have met with the prospective property purchaser of the property, Mr. Breeden spoke of. I, I understand they've probably backed out. The first question he asked me was, "How big does that oyster pile get? How bad does it smell and what hours we operate it?" I've also met with the property owners that are asking for requests, and I got the complete opposite. They were very, very complimentary of our operations, spoke of the, the joy of seeing the operations we do. Based on their background, I think they have a feel for, for the type of activities we do. But I, I do have concerns and trepidations that 15 years from now, if that property's sold, that I leave my kids in a position or the younger management that we have. And when I say kids, I'm speaking of my nephews, my daughter, the, the African-American gentleman I spoke of, all of these folks having to deal with a problem that, that I didn't speak to. So, that's, that's the main reason I'm here tonight, is just to voice those concerns and ask you consideration of, of those points. And if you do move forward to, move this forward to the, to the board and at least recognize that we may need some help in the future to defend the, the processes that we do. So, with that, I appreciate your time and would be more than happy to answer any questions.
Well put, Tommy. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're getting some history lessons up here tonight.
That's pretty amazing.
It was. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to voice before we close this portion of the public hearing? Glenn, do we have anyone online? All right, with that, I'll close this portion of our meeting and we'll get ready to open right back up again for item number four, Mr. Barnes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This next request is very similar, as you're all aware. This is a request for a M1 to R1.
I'm sorry.
Oh, you're going R.
No, and I meant to say this, and I said, if it pleases the commission, because we've got such two related zoning requests, I'd like to, to hold off on voting for either one until we hear both items, if that's okay. That's, that's what I was thinking. My apologies.
Yeah.
Brian and I talked about, I just was.
No problem, yeah, you can do that.
Yep.
Okay, anyway, didn't mean to interrupt you.
That makes sense, go ahead and have both hearings and then do your voting at the end.
Because I, my thought was we might hear information that helps with our decision with both.
With, with this, yeah, if that's, okay. With this request, the only thing that I want to mention, and the property owner brought this to my attention today, this request is advertised as 10.39 acres. This includes sub-aquous bottom on this parcel. We don't have a new survey of this parcel that I could show you, perhaps they do, that shows the, the sub-aquous to upland, fascine ratio there. But it is taxed as 10.39 acres. Of course, we tax sub-aquous bottom if that's what people represent. I, I needed to mention that to you. That, that did not get in your memo with an explicit breakdown, but I do want to mention that. Just like the last request, this property has been used historically for seafood uses. As, as you all know, the, the Morgan family operated Morgan Seafood. In this memo, I was able to capture some drone photos from Realtor.com and, and throw those in the memo to give you an idea of the parcel. Many of you might even be familiar with having worked there or been there at some time in the past. This does border the Jimmy and Sook property that you re- processed their request very recently, the old Abbott Crab Shack. And so, so this area has been predominantly M1. Further down, the, the little cottage, you do have the letter from the Browns, they own that, that's, that's on the other side. If you're looking at that, that first picture there, that little cottage further down the road was M1. That was rezoned to R1 several years ago. Now Jimmy and Sook, and of course, you're, you're kind of working your way on down the line. As, as Mr. Kellum and several others said, things are changing. That's, that's the trend here. Not, not at all an easy decision, as we're all aware. So, with that, I will close down. If y'all have any questions from me on process, I've provided you all the input I've received on it. I have not received any letters of protest. The only letters you have before you are letters of support.
Good.
How many acres of land is it? Is it the .98 or 9.4, 9.47 rather? If that's on the tax map?
At least two.
Two points, sorry. Just over 2.5.
2.5, that is in the water of the 10.
Of the 10, yeah.
Okay.
That would be two, two of the parcels would total like 2.5. It's one that could look.
Yeah, so this is eight acres.
No, no, this is all total, you were about two, just over two.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes, sir.
And, and forgive me for not asking you this prior to this meeting.
That's okay.
There's a question in here that you put in, in this package you gave. Given the time that this property was at, was sale, was the, did the county have opportunity? Did you, did you do any research on that?
Very little, mostly asking around with other staff. And of course, the question on this came up a little bit last year and I had the opportunity. Of course, Pete Ranson's not, has retired, but he had good colloquial knowledge of that. And he was not aware that the county ever, ever pursued that. I couldn't find anything in the file. I checked, the easiest thing to do is check what we call the scan file on that, which I did. I didn't find any, any, any transaction or anything that was filed that would show that the county pursued that. But, you know, that, that question may be asked by others, so I felt it proper to put in the memo for people to think about and consider.
I couldn't hear the question.
In, in our package here, second page, it says, it says, "Given the time that this property was sailed, did the county have an opportunity?" Was the county even aware of it?
Opportunity to buy it?
Buy it, yeah.
Yeah, that's the second paragraph down.
I saw that.
So, Brian, can I interrupt for a second? I think that we're still maybe a little confused, are we not all clear? If, if we're looking at this picture here, okay? We're talking about the property in question is here and it's seven and a half acres and then two and a half are submerged?
Is 9.2 parcels that are, can I?
Absolutely, please.
So, there's two parcels that are submerged. One is .55 acres and then one is 7.318 acres. And so, the remaining amount, that's, that's correct. And then the remaining amount is the 2.51 plus or minus acres.
Where the buildings are situated now.
Yes, sir.
Everything else is submerged.
Plus or minus acres.
Is that all?
Yes. This is all.
So, 9.47?
Yeah. The 9.47 is broken down as 7.318 submerged and 2.152. Term you use, upland?
Upland and fascine, yes. Okay. Sorry, I'll speak into the microphone, Glenn.
Now, I apologize, we should have included that into the.
The, this page that you have is your submittal to staff. I can only do as well as what I have and the county doesn't do their own surveys. So... The page that you have that shows the GIS map here, even though we map it like that, that is 2.1 acres, 2.147?
2.152.
Yeah, so it says 9.47, we're taxing 33-193, we're taxing 9.47 acres, but it's only 2.1 acres in a piece. I was not aware of that. When you click back and forth to the soil survey layer on that, it shows it much smaller, but the soil survey is 60 years old, so I thought in that time that had been a fill.
I, I just was always under the assumption it was, maybe I just remember it from the MLS system, but yeah, I just, that's.
Yeah.
I don't, yeah, nine acres. You guys have anything for Brian before we open up the public hearing?
So, the total acreage is 2-point-something acre?
That's above water, yeah.
Above ground? That's all three of these parcels?
If I'm hearing you correctly, yeah.
That's correct. There's two parcels that have upland land. One is .37 acres and then the other one is, the total is, of upland land is 2.152.
That's where the buildings are situated.
All right.
And it's got approximately, I think it's like 1,100 feet of waterfrontage, plus or minus.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else for Brian? Okay, you might want to just, I don't, I don't know, are you Mr. Robertson?
I am.
Okay, you got all your agents back there, though.
I came prepared.
Well, that's perfect, okay. Well, if you guys are ready, we'll go ahead and open up this portion of the public hearing. And we now know who the owner is. So, tell us a little bit, kind of what we asked Mr. Breeden. Mr. Robertson, what was your intention when you purchased it? You knew it was M1?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And it was just, just to, he just picked it up in December of 2020?
That's correct. So, is this, have we started the public hearing part? So, I'm going to give you a little bit more background on how all this came together.
Do you have his name and everything, because we sort of started impromptu?
Yep.
You got the name?
Okay. So, members of the planning commission, my name's Todd Robertson. This is my wife Dana sitting behind me here. We live currently in the Blacksburg, Virginia area. We kind of come from a little bit of an interesting story. We grew up together, high school sweethearts, I guess, and we ended up getting married, living on the shore for a period of time. And had the good fortune of being able to go back to Blacksburg and start a company. And we've always had this contrast of where we're going to live. She loves the coast, I have a, I like the Blue Ridge Mountains. And, and so, that's got us started looking for a property. And over the last five years, we've been looking for a property, South Carolina, North Carolina, and, and started this search into Virginia. Back last summer, I had the fortune of, good fortune of being invited up here to Carter's Cove and, from a good friend of ours. And he said, "You gotta, you know, look at this little cottage." And it was the Jimmy and Sook Cottage that is next door. And we looked at that and it didn't quite fit our needs and, and the, the real estate agent goes, "Hey, this property next door, it's been for sale for like 10 years, no one's interested in it because you can't get the septic to work on this property." And we walked out there and it's like, this is everything we've ever dreamed of. This is the property that meets everything. We have friends in the area, it has the water view. It, it just met everything. So, we got really excited about it. And so, for, we went back and forth with the sellers for probably about six weeks and we, we came to terms on a price. And I spent the next probably three, three and a half months trying to figure out a septic design that would house, that would just allow us to build the home that we wanted on it. And that wasn't easy due to the soil conditions. So, that's how we've got here. We did know that it was M1 and, you know, when you, when we looked at the property, we just felt like, given the entrance of Carter's Cove, where it was heading to, up to the Tides Inn and so forth, that, you know, the, the best use for this property and that we decided together that we were willing to take a chance on was for residential. And so, we kept moving forward and with some hope that we would have this day to be able to explain to you a little bit of the background and, and hope that you would agree with us on the, the best use for this property. I had, my number two bullet point was to tell, explain about the acreage, so I think we've covered that. Number, my fourth bullet point here was to talk a little about, about, a little bit about what Mr. Kellum talked about. We're very clear and, you know, may it be placed in the record that this site is adjacent to a, a oyster processing facility, a commercial use, industrial use. We understand the noise, we understand the smell. We own a beef cattle farm in the Blacksburg area, we also own a construction company. We feel that same pain that when people complain about things, when it's something that's been there for, for years. If Mr. Kellum ever has complaints, no one will be faster to volunteer to come back to this commission or the board of supervisors and defend his right to operate his business. And I will instruct, if I'm not, don't live long enough, then I will instruct my children to do the same thing one day. The, this last part, and, you know, the, the highest and best use of the property, we do fully. Our appraisal said the same exact wording that, that was in the, the previous applicant's appraisal. We believe that, you know, we also understand the process and we know the risks that we took, but we're here to ask for this rezoning. And I've asked Will Hubbard to, to also talk about the limitations to this property for me on my behalf or in my wife's behalf, as far as the septic and the wastewater and the hardships that it would create for any industrial-type use. And I'm going to turn the floor over to him and then I'll be available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Mr. Chairman, I know this gentleman from Blacksburg, I've spent a few years up in Charlottesville. I hope you will use the fact that he's from Virginia Tech.
Good evening. I was going to say something nice about Mr. Breeden, but I'm a Virginia Tech graduate, so. But in, in all honesty, I appreciate the opportunity to speak here tonight. It's always tough to follow Mr. Breeden and certainly Mr. Kellum and now Mr. Robertson. I, I've had a chance to review the, the application and some of the memoranda that have been bouncing back and forth and I, I feel like I have a pretty good sense of some of the concerns this commission has. And I want to touch on, on a couple of those. You know, one of the questions that I, I read was being considered was, "Will conversion of this site to a non-industrial use match the other uses in this neighborhood?" I feel like the answer to that is yes and that, you know, I think as, as Mr. Barnes alluded to earlier, that there have been adjacent parcels, one very recently rezoned from M1 to R1. And I believe that was a tax map 33-194. And then the summer cottage parcel, 33-194B, was rezoned to R1 several years ago. So, I, I think there's some precedent for this to be considered. Another one of the concerns brought up in a, in a memo was that with regard to high-capacity septic system, and I believe it was, "Would the property even be able to be used as a modern seafood processing facility where high-volume washdown and sanitary procedures are critical?" Historic use of the property, certainly in the seafood business, it's currently zoned M1, I think that's a very reasonable question. And I, I feel like we have a very clear answer to that from a letter I believe was shared with, with the commission from Bill Mahar, Mahar? Maher, there we go, always have a hard time with that one. Who, who is a licensed professional soil scientist. And I think he spoke very clearly in that letter that any industrial, commercial use of the property would be extremely limited, if not impossible, due to heavy clay soils, high seasonal water tables, topography, and Bay Act set facts. Be virtually impossible to get any kind of discharge permit down there. Given new technological advances, I think a residential engineered system may be the only feasible thing, nothing beyond that. This point is also, I think, what distinguishes this particular property perhaps from other properties now or even in the future. If this commission hears other applicants coming forward and say, "Well, our property is zoned M1, we'd like to be considered R1." I can't speak to those other properties, but I can tell you this property in particular faces this almost insurmountable issue as to sewage and septic use. So, if there is no real industrial sewage or septic option there, there's no real option for the landowner to use it in conformity with the current zoning. Also note for the, the commission, adjacent property owners have expressed support. I believe there are letters in the file and I, I know that there- I believe there are letters in the file and I, I know that there are individuals here tonight who would voice their support. There was, there were comments about consideration of public access. And I wholeheartedly agree that public access is important for the residents of this county. I've lived here my whole life. I, I share those concerns. At this point, given that I think the, it was stated a moment ago, the property had been for sale for around ten years. No one had been able to make an offer on it that brought it to contract until Mr. Robertson. So I think there was ample time to, to really investigate and get into, into the details of using that as a potential public access. And unfortunately, I also have the background to say, even the speculation of having public access, which again, I, I think is a great idea and I think we need to look into it. But at this point, it is speculation. I know years ago, my family tried to work with the county, I think with regard to the Ashley's Cove project. And that did not make much headway after there was a lot of public input about traffic going down the road. That was one among many issues. So at this stage, public access for this particular property, I think, is, is just that, it's conjecture. And we would be depriving the landowner of the highest and best use of this property. And as I stated, industrial is just not it right now, just given the circumstances of the soil and sewage options. So I would respectfully request that the board approve tonight the highest best use, highest and best use of the property. Approve the rezoning of the property to R1 and let it be put to use. Mr. Robertson is here tonight with his wife and, and I think has been very forthright and considerate in coming to the board tonight so that he could be here as well to answer any questions. And, and at this stage, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions this, this commission may have.
I'd just like to state for the record that we're not looking for public access sites. I don't want to get everybody rattling their sabers at, you know, that's not what we're, that's, you know, that's not, I mean, sure it's been brought up, but that's not the purpose of this hearing by any stretch.
And I understand, but I, I didn't want to.
David, you remember those days, don't you?
When it's been brought up in discussion.
You remember those days, don't you?
As I said.
But Mr. Brent, Mr. Brent, you have to, you have to recognize that we have to hear to least what the comprehensive plan has said. And that's, that's the reason why, you know, it's stated in this packet, because the comprehensive plan said we need to be conscious of, of land, you know, for public access. So we can't just ignore it, you know, that, that it don't exist.
And it states that to preserve working waterfront.
That's right. That's the second thing it says, yeah.
So those both are in the comprehensive plan.
Agreed.
I don't understand how this property was a seafood processing facility for years and operated millions of tons of seafood through it, but today they can't. And maybe Mr. Kellum can help me understand that. What you're saying is that it can't be done today to be used as a seafood processing plan.
I can speak to that.
Right, and I'll let Mr. Jones speak to that. My speculation would be that once activity ceased there, any permits or legal rights to use it as such then ended. And now if they were to try to resume that kind of business there, they would have to go through the process all over again. That would be my, my belief. And at this, at this stage, given the current state of the Bay Act and all, as I said, the other issues that were addressed in the letter tendered here, be obscenely difficult. Perhaps Mr. Kellum can fill us in on.
Sure.
What he sees and knows and operates.
Virginia Department of Environmental Quality still holds a general discharge permit for straight forward seafood operations. This is a five hundred dollar application. You're pretty much just going to do the process you're going to have for wastewater. It does not obviously cover industrial wastewater, but it is a pretty easy process to get a discharge for seafood operation.
And then. So it can be used for.
Yeah, and in terms of the wastewater treatment from sanitation and sanitary facilities, the Department of Agriculture does allow pump and haul option. We have an operation in Deltaville, many of you probably familiar with J and W Seafood, which is inland there in the same circumstance with the inability to have a conventional wastewater system and they have a pump and haul system in place.
Thank you. So that clarifies that it could be used for a seafood processing plant where you're saying it can't. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we'd like to say.
Thank you, Mr. Hubbard.
Thank you.
David, if you don't mind, could you speak in the microphone, David? Because the camera will also.
Thank you very much.
Catch you there.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Chairman, David Jones.
Nice to see you again, Mr. Jones.
Formerly of District Five and Three. The only thing I'll speak to, Mr. Richardson on the sewer is Tommy is exactly correct. I've been dealing with this property for probably fifteen years. Up until new technology came out here recently, no septic system was approved for that property. We went to what you would call the Supreme Court of the Department of, of Health, the Health Department in Richmond and lost, just trying to get a septic system on that property for a three-bedroom house. Fifteen years. That's why the property hadn't sold. The, the commercial part, and I'll get to that in a minute, I guess after Jimmy talks, is, is a whole different story, which I'll talk about. But the sewer is an issue. It is a huge issue and has been for at least fifteen years that we've been, that I've been dealing with this property. It's not a question of, of dumping the water if you're going to clean oysters or do crabs. That's easy. It's flushing the toilet. That's the hard part. And, and Mr. Robertson, and I forget what your septic permit is for now, but it's not for a lot of water a day. It's like six hundred gallons at the most. So, so Tommy is exactly right as far as the wastewater, but not the, not the sewer water. So I just wanted to clear that up.
Yeah, we just have heard a lot that you can't use it for this, you can't use it for that. And I think those statements are incorrect. It can be used for industrial use. So, am I?
Yeah. I hear you, yeah. Good evening. Jimmy Carter, District Five. So I've been dealing with land use in this county probably longer than anybody else in the county. I can remember before the ordinance, just used to be go to, go to Mac McSwain and he would approve something. We didn't have ordinance when I started. The, when I look at this piece of property, and I'm really familiar with this piece of property, Bill Westbrook and I worked on buying this piece of property for a long time and we weren't going to use it for residential uses. We were looking at marina uses and those types of things. The problem with this is, is that it's just, it's, it's, I mean, the sewer is a problem. And I understand what, what Mr. Kellum said, that, that maybe there could be a use for, for some type of waterfront use. And I understand the problem y'all have got, that y'all are trying to figure out, how do we protect these last sort of waterfront zone properties? What I would say is that, that, that you've got a president, you've, you've zoned the properties next door, you've already taken those from, from M1 down to, to residential use. This is right there next, next to Jimmy's, you know, Jimmy's, where you all have already done, set that president. It's for any type of public use, and I understand that this is not a public use. It's really a small vertical piece. It, it doesn't, doesn't fit for vertical, there's not enough parking there. It's too vertical to get down to the water for much, I mean, you might be able to put a pier right there, but, but, but you're not going to get boats coming and going. And, and Mr. Lee and I know we're working on another idea for water access in the county.
Got a boat ramped on it, Jimmy?
Yeah, I don't think that it, it's guided, but I think it's so vertical getting down there. I'm not sure, Tom, if you've ever, you've been over there?
Yep.
Yeah, it's, it's a big drop. I'm not too sure you wouldn't have trucks plucking down Carter's Creek.
I think there's a place to get down there.
Yeah. And, but, but the real case here is that, is that the, when you go back to the intent of the buyer, the intent of this buyer when he bought the property was to use this for residential. And I'll be honest, I talked to him when he bought it, I never thought there was going to be any problem getting this property. I'll be honest, I, I never, it's, it's my fault. I mean, you would think it when I've been around property as long as I, I thought that, that the down zoning was not a problem, all the problems existed in up zoning, you know? With the president next door, with, with, with the limited sewer, with the, this market, this property's been on the market for so long. I mean, everybody's looked at it. I mean, I've been working on it for fifteen years. I just think that it's time to let this property just move to where it needs to move. I just, I'm really encouraging you. I think the time's come that, that this property deserves to be, to be used for residential. I just don't think, to think, just, just to hold it out there and think there's going to be some future use for this property, I, I just, I just don't think it's, it's open. I think it's, it's just, I think you're just, just hurting, hurting the ability to get this property moved forward. I, I just, I just think that it's the reasonable thing to do. And especially with the president you've already set next door, it just seems like a logical thing to me, just to go and let, 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 let this one go. And I know the dilemma, but this, this is a special case. And I'm happy to answer any questions. I've a lot of experience. Good. Appreciate it. Thank you so much. I know it's tough.
Does anyone else have anything they'd like to add? Mr. Jones?
Just a little bit, please. Sorry.
Just a little bit, you got a, you got a tablet there, so it doesn't look like.
I do have a tablet. Hope I can read my writing. If not, I'll have to wing it as I usually do. Thanks again for letting me speak, ladies and gentlemen. I am David Jones again. And we've been here a long time tonight, so I don't want to hold you up. There's just a few things I think I want to go through that have not been discussed tonight. Mr. Lee's brought up the comprehensive plan a couple of times and I want to touch on I was sitting on this commission when we helped draft the comp plan to discuss saving the waterfront properties for future use. Back then, it wasn't as much as public access as it was hoping that the waterfront dependent business would come back, especially to mom and pop. So I sat on that, I pushed for that if anybody was on the commission remembers, mainly because a lot of my family is in waterfront dependent businesses. But having said that, things have changed since we, since I was on that plan and commission and we did that comp plan fifteen years ago. They have changed, things have changed. The small mom and pop operations are, are not gone, but they're going. And it just through, like any other kind of farming, the, the land farming, the larger farmers, whether they're on land or whether they're on the water, are, are gobbling up through attrition the smaller businesses. And that's just how it goes in, 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 in business, especially in our area it seems to be. The larger businesses like Kellum or Coward Seafood or Bevins, they have, they've come along and that's, that's just what happens. The sad truth is, I think it's very unlikely that we're going to get a big rush of small water dependent or even medium sized dependent businesses coming back. I would love to see it personally. I would love to see it. But if, if, if that were the case, I think this piece of property would have already been gobbled up. Mr. Costello and I argue is the wrong word, but had many deep discussions here at nights of a population, if you remember. Charlie was very concerned that by now we'd have thirty thousand people living in Lancaster County, that's a big no-no. But we prepared for it, right? We prepared for the thirty thousand people, they didn't come, but we still prepared our land use for that. And you all have been changing things to prepare for that having not happened. We also prepared for the small mom and pop businesses to come back and they just had not come back. And it's very unfortunate, but they haven't. The larger businesses have, and I think Tommy touched based on that, that he's not going to get smaller. He's going to do nothing but get larger. And if the, the neighborhood, if people moving the neighborhood don't like what he's doing, they shouldn't move there. Just like the people that moved to Reedville don't like the fish factory, shouldn't complain about it. They saw it sitting there when they came in. It's a simple fact. These folks love what, what the Kellums are doing over there and so do, it seems to me, I work for a lot of the residents in that area, they seem to like the activity, that's one of the reasons they came. So hopefully, well, one more point I wanted to make, if you look just down the creek, right, so these folks' properties just run on the point, if you look just around the corner and up the creek was Irvington Packing Company, another large oyster company and crab company years and years ago. Twenty-six acres on the water, didn't have near as much frontage as these folks do, but it's a lot more property, easier access to the water, had better facilities with the boathouse and the whole works. Set for sale ten to twelve, fourteen years. Never a decent contract on it until last year. It just sat there. So if, if, if there was a need, a dire need for these water dependent properties, then I think those two, right on Carter's Creek, would have been snatched up for something other than, than residential. So I, look, I, I'm big on water dependent properties for, I mean, saving the waterfront properties for water dependent uses. But I just don't think that, that the property that these folks bought is, is going to go back to that. I just don't. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Anybody else like to come up and voice their opinion, one way or the other? Yes, sir, Mr. Robertson.
I would like to say one more thing. And I know Mr. Richardson has been out to the property as he mentioned a few minutes ago. The condition of the buildings themselves have really dilapidated over the last ten to twelve years since it's last been used. And I think that is, it, another processor just couldn't move into those buildings. They would still have to be torn down. And even if you had a pump and haul permit and did a number of other things, that would be a ser, a, a large undertaking in itself.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public hearings, portion of this meeting. We're here live tonight.
I'll go first. I have a number of thoughts on this. First of all, it's a spectacular piece of property. It has, captures waterfront views of Carter's Creek that I've never seen a, a parcel in the county that equals it. I mean, there's all kinds of recreational and commercial watercraft going by in a constant parade. There are oyster houses on the harbor, Kellum's, a shipyard, million dollar homes. It's a classic view of the, the most charming parts of the northern neck. My own personal view is that it's in fact, it's a view that should be shared by many people and not by one family, unfortunately. I think it's fair to consider public access because as Mr. Lee points out, it's, we're required to consider that for these ex-commercial waterfront properties as a possible use. So I think we should consider it for that. In any event, to rezone this would preclude any consideration of that. It's, it's also incumbent on us to, to consider the fact that this is a waterfront property at, at the end of a, a public road. And they're given special consideration under the, the state's Public Access Authority Act. And I think we should be considering what sort of possibilities that raises. We do have a Northern Neck Public Access Authority. We haven't used it much. The Middle Peninsula, Chesapeake Bay Public Access Authority has been much more active. And the middle counties have numerous public access sites that are situated at the end of road endings. So I, I think we should be considering that. In any event, those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Dave. This is a, this, this particular one, the second one, is a pickle for me because it's not like the family that owns it, bought it for an investment. Does that make any sense like our first public hearing? This was in. This was in the family forever, and it has been. It's sat there forever and ever. What are you going to do with it? I agree, I'm in total agreeance. The buildings are deteriorating. It looks like, you know, crud down there. But, you know, the, the flip side is, you know, Tommy, and this is nothing against you, Mr. and Mrs. Robertson, you guys seem like the coolest people in the world, honestly. But what about the next person? What, what, what does Tommy do when he finds himself now in basically a, a residential area, you know, 10, 15, 20 years down the road? And they're asking, you know, asking us as the county, hopefully I won't be here, but they're asking us as the county, is they, you know, what the hell, you got an industrial zone property right in the middle of all of these neighborhoods? And then, then what, then what do we do? So, I don't know. It's a pickle. On the first one, I kind of, if it, if it pleases the commission, I would like to table it because I would like to see what your owner does have to say, Mr. Breeden, based on, can you hear me?
No.
You had, you had mentioned that your owner may be open to some other options. And you suggested that possibly tabling this until you spoke to him might be, and I think that, that's worth, you know, a look into?
I'm more happy to do that.
Instead of voting on that one, just to see what his client wants to do? But that leads us to our second one. What do you guys think? What are your thoughts?
Let me ask some questions. I'm just, I'm new. So when you rezone somebody from M1 to R1, right, do you have to rezone that whole property? He only has two acres above water, right? So all that, that 9.7 has to be rezone?
Right.
Or just the, the two and the seven stay in one?
I think it's the entire parcel. Am I correct? Or is there a difference between submerged and the upland?
The, the reason why, and yeah, you're right, because the upland is, is the only part that we would consider usually developable. The reason why you would want to, and why I imagine the Morgan family wanted to make sure the sub-aquous part was zoned industrial as well, is so that they could have wider peers and that they wouldn't be subject to residential restrictions on their below, you know, below-water development. So you're right, if you're going to build a house there, the sub-aquous bottom being, being rezoned is, is not a, not a, really a concern. But you could, there are ways of, of splitting the map. There are parcels in the county that are, are partially rezoned for something. So I would imagine, Mr. Davenport, you could do the same thing here. You could rezone the upland portion and keep the sub-aquous bottom as M1. I think that, that request would probably best come from the applicant rather than the county saying, you know, we think you should rezone the upland but leave the... I get where you're going, though, because if you ever did do a marina there or whatever, you have...
The seven acres.
Yeah. It's already ready to go as far as the zoning goes, but that's a good, that's a good point.
That's a good point.
That's a good thought.
Yeah. So what do you think?
I'm really torn. I feel like as we think this through and we consider our, our recommendations, that the first and foremost thing is what a comprehensive plan says because we took an oath that we were going to follow that. And I was here and I agree with David Jones that times were different when we wrote that. And, you know, when we come around the next round, maybe it's time to really take a deep look again into how we word it. But right now, it says that we want to keep our waterfront industrial property, waterfront industrial property, and that we want to keep open our options for public access. And I feel like if I went, if I voted in a different way, I would not be upholding my oath.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Luanne, you have, Mr. Penn, anything you would like to add? Okay.
Let me add one other thought. And I guess I say this with a little authority in that I was a real estate broker for a number of years. But it was a long time ago. However, I think a lot of professional realtors would agree with me that part of the charm of a harbor like Carter's Creek is the fact that there are commercial activities going on, that there are some old buildings, maybe, maybe some abandoned crab shacks, that sort of thing. Whereas another multimillion-dollar house is, is probably not going to add that much to the charm of Carter's Creek. So, you know, the thought that were, and, you know, I, I can understand how the neighbors feel. They, they see the properties as somewhat derelict, but visitors to this area might not see it exactly that way. I think, I think Carter's Creek would, would lose a lot of its charm if we rid ourselves of these quote, "derelict" properties, and it's all million-dollar homes. We have a number of, of harbors in, in the county where, where that's true. There is no commercial activity, and in my opinion, they aren't nearly as charming as Carter's Creek.
It's a tough one.
It is a tough one, no doubt about it. So before we get to the tough one, how about I make an, a motion that we table our first public hearing for a month? Is that okay with you guys?
A month or even more.
Or longer? We'll just wait to hear, we'll wait to hear back from you, Mr. Breeden, on that one?
I will just make the initial contact. I have a merger this month, but before that, I will contact.
Well, enjoy your time with us before you have to go back to the courtroom then, the regular courtroom.
And I, I will get back to that. I think if there's anybody I know that might entertain this concept in favor of we, it would lead somebody like Ray Harrison to take something of a burden.
Thank you. With that said, we've got a motion on the table, all in favor of tabling our first public hearing until next month, possibly later.
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. Okay, Tom, I'll let you, I knew you said it was a tough one. Do you want to recommend this?
I don't know. I'm on the fence.
I'm on the fence as well.
I mean, I don't want to see a property just sit.
You guys have strong feelings one way or the other?
And sit forever.
I know we're, I think I know we're, but I don't want to hold them up either. I'm not sure if anybody's minds going to change.
My thought is that we should not approve this tonight.
Would you rather table it?
I wouldn't rather, I would rather disapprove, send a recommendation of the board, if the board disapprove it pending further study of, of other possibilities.
Well, that's what my thought was. Do we want to table it until we hear back from Mr. Breeden? But if you guys want to vote on it, I'm fine with that. What are your thoughts, Mr. Lee?
You already tabled the first one, so you're not for hear back from Mr. Breeden on this one.
Tabled the first one, but I'm saying we could table the second one.
Yeah.
Until we hear back to see what about the...
Well, I don't know, I don't know, what, what are you going, what are you waiting for on, on this one? Yeah, because we, because then we like pass it down the road. If we, if we pass this one, then we feel like we got to pass the next one. And maybe Mr. Chup said something very interesting, and you also said something very interesting at where this piece of property is public access, end of the maintenance for the highway. And, but then you said something very interesting. So you're kind of like torn between should you or should you not? Mr. Breeden has said some things that caused me to think that, wow, I don't want to do this. I don't want to leave it as it is would be the proper thing, but table it will be fine. But for this one, seemed like a, you know, it wasn't like somebody made to me a bad decision and now want to change it to get out or save or whatever. But this one seems to be like, you know, somebody want to build a home. But you also got to be very careful because we know how we do around this area, this beautiful area of Lancaster County, especially on the water, build a house, and then we, you know, it's all about the profit. So, wow.
I know. I know. Well put.
If we approve this petition tonight, that forecloses all our options on the property. And it also furthers a, a trend, a precedent.
Yes.
Whereas if we disapprove it pending further study, there's always the possibility that we can invite a, a reaplication later on and go ahead with, with their alternative. But if we approve it tonight, that's it. And this is a spectacular, one-of-a-kind property.
So I, I think one place where I disagree with Mr. Chup is that we have two separate properties, and I see it as two, two different things that we're considering. So we have the Harris property that is for sale, that has the potential, perhaps, of being a public access site. Okay, that's to the side. Now we have a property that the Robertsons have purchased. They're not looking to sell it. They're not looking to sell their property to make public access. They're looking to make their home there, which, it's beautiful. I don't blame you. Like, I get it. So, so the conversation about turning their property into public access, I think we shouldn't even be having. They didn't bring that up. They don't want to sell their property. So, you know, I hate to say, like, hold on, maybe someday we'll change the comprehensive plan. But my other thought, I've been on this commission for over 20 years, and I don't think I have ever said this. I'm not so sure that we don't send this with a recommendation of no recommendation. They have the minutes. The Board of Supervisors can see all the conversation. I mean, there's been great discussion.
I hear you.
I mean, you can hear how torn we all are. They make the final decision.
David, I'm glad you came back to see the toughest decision we've had to make in your absence.
And you know, and you know what they're doing, Dave.
Passing the buck.
Well, you, I, as your staff person, I will say that that is an option, and you know that very well, Tara. You all have done that over the years. You may send that forward to the board with a recommendation of no recommendation, that, hey, let the board decide what, what they feel is best. That's possible. You've done a lot of research. We've done a lot of research. They've provided a lot of extra things in the minutes that might, might put some flesh on that bone for the board, but that's up to you.
Respectfully, I, I would request that this board make a decision tonight whether the approved, not, or no recommendation, regularly recommend for it. But I, I join really Ms. Booth in her sentiments there that Mr. Robertson and his wife, they, they don't have any intention at this time of selling it. They intend to build on this property, as you mentioned. And I'm just, I'm distressed at the possibility of any progress, one way or the other, of this property being held up for further investigation. When the property sat on the market for 10 to 15 years...
That's part of the struggle. I get it. I get it. I totally get it.
Let me clarify the point on public access. Public access authority, what, what they've done on road endings like this is the state has given the public continued lifetime access to that road ending where it meets the water. Basically, a 30-foot public access to that waterfront, no matter who in fact owns the land. And this has been confirmed repeatedly by the, the courts in the middle peninsula counties. Now, whether, I don't, I can't say that that's applicable in this case for sure, but it may be. So I don't think we should foreclose that possibility.
Thank you, Dave. All right, I say let's put it to the, what do you think?
Yeah.
You want to recommend?
You know what I'm going to say?
I know what you're going to say.
Okay. I would like to make a motion that we forward this request for the re-zoning from M1 Industrial Limited to R1 Residential by Todd Robertson. Forward that to the Board of Supervisors with no recommendation.
We have a recommendation on the table, a motion on the table, rather, at this time. All in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye. So it's one, two, three, four. Yeah. I'm going to go on the record as a nay to that as well. But we've got enough votes to forward it as recommended with a no recommendation. Sorry to do that to you, Mr. Lee.
You just got to deal with it.
So, but thank you very much.
Yeah, right.
Tom Callum's got something?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, just asking a question. I truly believe that the Robertson's intend to build a house here and have no intention of selling it. Is it in such things as conditional use that just like working waterfront receives where they would get a conditional use for, for R1? However, it would have to come back and be looked at in the future if sold and reevaluated for the M1?
As I know it, and Brian, I know you sleep with your pamphlet, your ordinance pamphlet, but I don't think at this particular time, as we sit here right now, that you can have a special exception in an M1 zone for residential. Am I correct on that assumption?
That's correct. That's not listed as a, being available in M1. The, the one thing that was discussed, I won't say who I, I discussed it with, but some areas and some counties, some localities are starting to allow as a permitted use wit comma with a special exception, would be a single-family residence in the M1 zone. There are pros and cons for that, of course. One be, one pro being, well, across the country generally is more of a trend back to mixed uses like we used to have. We talk about that a lot. Rural village overlay is a perfect example of kind of a mixed use. The only, the, the, the cons are that, you know, what is industrial in some counties is industrial. Of course, our, even our comp plan says we're looking for light industrial. We're not looking for things that emit big smoke stacks and plumes and paper mills. So we're not talking about a house and a paper mill. We would be talking about something simpler. That could be done, but I think that would be a really big process to undertake. You would have to come to you guys, and I think that would take a while, and then add that to the ordinance. That might be a bit wonky, so, but, but possible. But I don't think the Robertsons have that kind of time. I think they're looking for a, a nod one way or the other, so.
Does that tell you? Okay. Thank you, Brian. All right, thank you, guys. Thank you, guys, for all your input. We've had a long session, but it's been ver, rather enlightening. So we're moving right along. We have one consideration item, it's item number five. Chapter six of the comprehensive plan.
Yes.
If you want to, let's take a second because I don't think that our guests are going to want to wait for it.
See you guys.
See you guys. We wanted you all to stay. Thank you. Thank you. Tommy, good seeing you, buddy. Tommy, nice seeing you. Thank you for all you said.
Thank you.
Wonderful man. That's what made it so tough. It is what it is. Okay. Item number five, consideration item, chapter six, comprehensive plan. Mr. Barnes, take it away, please.
There are many times I would, I don't mind where I'm sitting and I don't, yeah, I don't envy you guys at all on several of those items. Okay, so, so this is chapter six. A, a while ago, I switched to using some colors for the edits so that you guys could kind of follow a progression.
Very helpful, by the way.
Tonight, we're pink, so.
Like it. Cancer awareness month.
That's right, that's right. So I thought pink might show up okay with the copier machine and it looks like it did. I'll just jump right in to save time. Page six dash seven, Tara recommended a couple edits last month that I hope I got in there the way that she intended. And you see those in pink there, Lancaster High School, Lancaster Middle School. Just clarify some of the infrastructure available there. As you go to six dash nine, actually, this came from Mr. Costello, if I'm not mistaken, and, and Mr. Richardson to, to make it simpler. Golden Eagle was mentioned twice. I just struck that one there at the end there of that paragraph. As you go forward, excuse me.
Brian, I made a note on six eleven.
Six eleven, okay.
Can, can we add something under solid waste facilities?
Yes, sir.
The current user demand sometimes exceeds capacity at the Kimona White Pine Drive site, the kind of, you know, beginning to explore. One of the things we need to add is expanding that site, you know?
Okay.
Because we got enough land and we, you know, we did a little research. We got plenty of land, so that should be an option that we, we could expand that site along with looking at a site in White Stone.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, you're, you're exactly right. I think that's a good idea. Just so you all know, Donald Brown, the solid waste manager, and I, over the last few months, we've been sitting down with surveys of that site and since I look at site plans all day, he has shown me some of the things you all have drawn in and there's some good ideas there to make that more, if nothing else, make it flow where you pull in one way and come back out the other.
So we can get some verbiage in that.
Okay. Improvement and expansion of White Pine Drive site.
Yeah.
All right, I'll try to add something like that and see what you guys think. I think the next one was six thirteen, was that? Yes. On page six thirteen there at the top, I think Dave Chup mentioned this and a few others. And I agree with that. Instead of the word include, consider protection of existing mill ponds and the county will adopt, should consider adopting regulations. It was alluded to tonight by several folks that, hey, once we were planning, not too long ago, 15, 20 years ago, planning for 30,000 people, so these, these water sites were thought to be really a pressing need. Now we realize, of course, that language said will, 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 should. Now we realize we can pull the throttle back a little bit on that. I, I think it's probably prudent to keep the language in there, but, but now maybe it's a consider or should consider. I don't know what you all think about how, what I did there, but.
Looks great.
Yeah, fine.
Okay, all right. Page six fifteen, really quick.
Six thumbs up.
We'll move along. Lancaster County will, we've changed that to may develop boundaries. I think that's, that would be great to have Lancaster Courthouse Village as a historic overlay. Things are getting better with the real estate market, but I just, I don't see a groundswell movement there just yet. And I think that was the last of the pink edits for this one.
It's looking good.
Nice job.
I think it's ready to go. Do you want to keep it any longer?
No, thank you.
Okay.
I don't mind you, I, as I always tell you guys, you guys drive and I, I fix the engine the best I can. I will do what you tell me to do, but.
Before we, before we wrap this up, I've got a comment on six nineteen.
Okay.
Last sentence, we say in five years, the LCBA goal is to have the county's internet infrastructure utilizing the latest fiber technology that will be reliable and affordable, et cetera. Where, where did the five years come from? Last I heard, their goal was to have this all done in the fall of 2023.
2024. See, now we, this, this, this came directly from the.
The broadband committee.
This came directly.
So now it's five years?
It's 2024. So I don't, I don't know how, who's putting 2023 at that, but the last meeting we had, it was 24, so.
Yeah, I know enough about this to be dangerous. If you ever want to know everything about broadband accessibly quick as Don Gill, he can really just shoot it out there. I think that, and I think you're right, it was 2023. It did get pushed back a bit, partly because the broadband committee was waiting on grant, a word on a grant and it was a, there was a federal thing and you know how the federal government works on with grants. I think that just their waiting costs them some time. I think they're moving now, but, but yeah, I did not write this in full disclosure. Cassie, Cassie Thompson and, and Gary Silverman wrote this.
So their estimate now is five years?
Yes, sir.
But that's not five years.
Twenty twenty six. Well, four.
Twenty four is only three. So it does say 2024 in the middle of that and then at the end it says five years. So is it two different goals? Or is it the same goal?
Twenty twenty four, it's supposed to be finished.
So then should it say three years? Because if I count correctly.
I knew what you're saying.
Well, no, Tara, Tara, you're right on that, but I think what they mean by that is the fine print. In five years, the LCBA goal is to have the county's internet infrastructure utilizing the latest fiber technology that will be. So some of their 2024 goals are not going to be met with fiber. And I think that's the difference. I know, I'm not going to speak for him, but Gary Silverman on the broadband, he is all about fiber and he's, he's adamant that our broadband be provided by the best stuff. In the meantime, some of these goals are going to be met by copper cable, frankly.
That makes sense.
But their marching order is fiber to every home. Fiber available to every home. That's, that's the, that came from us to the authority. So that's the goal.
I know you'll like to hear that with virtual.
I do not, especially right now.
No, no. My kids started in Northumberland this week and already some of their co-students have had to go home to quarantine and they're back on campus, so.
Already? Yep, yep.
Just a few. That's going to happen, but the, the, the internet certainly helps with that, but, no, I appreciate you all being patient on this and, and I, I don't mind taking a good, as we saw tonight, having a good comp plan is a, is a real tool that I think, I, I think our county, I've said this before, our county does a great job with comp plan. We use it actively as a tool. So take as much time as you need. Make it, make it the way you want it.
You talking chapter six?
Next month? All right, I will schedule it for you for September.
We don't need to vote on that, do we?
If, if you kind of nod your head, Crystal's going to write it in the minutes that a, a consensus of the board was that staff should schedule it for September.
Any, what do we got coming around the corner?
Okay, this is something that is hot off the press.
Another rezoning in the Weems?
No more waterfront rezonings for September, I promise. The, the, the weird thing, you'll have chapter six, of course, thank you. The, the odd thing is that you may have, you may have a solar farm or two, and I'll tell you why. Jim Cornwell and I had a meeting this week and we really got into the weeds on, okay, how, we've got, we've got six solar applications in or pre-apps in. And then now we've got to figure out the mechanics of exactly how do certain projects get processed from a legal standpoint. You all are aware of the Siting Agreement Code, the Code of Virginia Modified 15.2-2232, the code that requires that major plans be consistent with the comprehensive plan before they're approved by your body and, and move on to the board. Some projects over five megawatts are allowed to waive that requirement through a siding agreement. That is kind of a carrot and stick. That, that gets these bigger sites to come to the board with the board having negotiation power to say, no, we don't like this area, we don't like this area, move it back. Sometimes capital changes hands in those siding agreements. By doing that siding agreement, they avoid planning commission review because the process of doing the site agreement finds that the project is substant- substantially in accordance with the comprehensive plan. The weird thing is that the smaller projects under five megawatts are not bound to come to the county with a siding agreement. So there's a new little subsection in there that, that's kind of, the way Jim and I are interpreting it now legally is that I do have to send those to you for a 2232 review. That may change in the next week or so, we're kind of ironing down on it, but I'm kind of planning now on, there are two projects that have applied, they've paid their fees. One is on a parcel that's already M1. The other is an A2 property. They may need to come to you for a 2232 review. There's another project that's about 20 acres and two megawatts, about the same size project that has already told us, no. Even though that we're not required to come to the county with a siding agreement, we have a pot of money we're going to give the county and we're also looking to help the county with some public access issues. So they may be able to do a siding agreement with the board and avoid coming to the planning commission, so. That's kind of confusing, but you, and I, I told Donna, I said, they're going to kill me if I use the word solar again, but you may review these two smaller projects for conformance with, with comprehensive plan. The good thing is that they're smaller projects and both of them tucked back, they have forestry all around them, they have ag around them and, and they are what's called community solar. They're interconnected to the distribution lines in a smaller way, so it's something to think about.
They probably be on the order, the one that we did in White Stone for the hubbers.
Exactly like that, yes.
We did one two or three years ago.
Where, where are we with the big one, the Dominion one?
You remember that?
It's done. Guys done?
Yeah.
The, the funny thing is everybody's talking about the big Dominion project. Of all the projects I just mentioned, Dominion project is the only one that's really still on the drawing board and is not an application and is really not even what I call pre-app phase. These other projects have already, they've given me documentation and paid fees, so.
Interesting, okay.
Yeah.
Brian, I just want you to know, I would much rather hear solar than Weems.
Touche. Understood.
Anything else we should be aware of? Are we good to go?
That's it, yeah.
All right, thanks, everyone. See you next month.